Okay, we will reconvene the meeting now. Appreciate everyone taking that brief time out. Everyone could have a seat, please. We'll officially call the meeting back to order. Drew, at break, you and I spoke a little bit, and I know that Christmas is approaching. And as we're semi-used to Mondays, why don't you go ahead and schedule a work session for next Monday? And we can always cancel if we need to, but we at least post it. I think Councilman Graham, if I remember correctly, has an issue on Tuesdays until after six. Is that correct, Carlos?
Yeah.
So with that being said, is six o'clock okay? You want to go 6:30? Carlos?
Six thirty.
Okay, good deal. Monday. It'd be Monday, so it would save us from going into one...what's that? No, Monday is your conflict, right? Right. Six o'clock next Monday. Schedule the work session, Drew and Clerk, and we will see where we go from there. All right, guys? All right. Moving on. Let's see here. Got that done? That one, that one. Announcements by council or staff. Presentations from...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There's a work session scheduled for next Monday at six o'clock.
Oh, thank you very much. Wow. It's like Groundhog's Day all over again. At what time?
Six o'clock.
Just wanted to make sure you got it. Okay. No one underneath number ten, correct, fellas? All right. Consent agenda. At this point in time, we entertain a motion to accept our consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
It's been moved. And seconded discussion, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. I'll pose same sign. Motion passes. No bids over fifty thousand. Bill's introduced. First reading of 2013-108.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating public alleyways near Meadows Place, 1805 Seven Hills Road.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this ordinance would vacate an alley. It's an unapproved alley off Seven Hills Road. The property owner requested it. The item went through Public Works and Planning, and they recommended approval to the council. The staff checked with utility companies and looked at some of our long-range plans, and there's no need to retain the alley.
Any questions to staff? Moving on, we'll have first reading of 2013-109.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Midwest ATC Service Incorporated for air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of October 1, 2013, to September 30, 2014.
Matt?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is our agreement for our air traffic control tower. Basically, MoDOT...this is funded through MoDOT and the city. The MoDOT, they have a formula where they look at various aspects of our airport and determine a funding formula. They've determined they would fund eighty-two percent of the tower costs, and the city would pick up the remaining eighteen percent. Total for the city cost for that calendar year, the clerk mentioned, is just under eighty-four thousand dollars. The total contract then would be just over four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. Have any answer? Any questions?
Any questions for Matt? All right, we have first reading of 2013-2010.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract amendment with the city of Holt Summit for wastewater treatment.
Matt?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would approve an agreement with Holt Summit for wastewater treatment. The city would be treating their sanitary waste at our treatment plant. We currently do this through an agreement. However, this would modify that agreement and replace it. Right now, we're basically billing on a flow-type arrangement. Holt Summit was investigating. And I might point out, Mr. Crane is here, their city administrator.
Brian, welcome.
Brian Crane. And if there's any particular questions, you might have a Holt Summit. But anyway, they...we are working with them. Basically, they looked into building their own treatment plant versus pumping to the city. And we came up with...mutually came up with this agreement that basically standardized the rates based on estimated flow and some maximum flows. There's a chart in the material here in your packet. It would protect the city's interest and Holt Summit's both. I think it does something for us. It guarantees our revenue stream, which we're already accustomed to, and the flow we're getting. It allows them to expand their facility a little bit. We have the capacity at the plant, so it's a good thing for us. Then also, which isn't represented yet tonight, but I believe next time we'll have an annexation agreement with Holt Summit where we have kind of a line where we've agreed to not to annex past either city. So a couple of good things for us. It also gives them some stability in their rate structure and allows them to utilize our regional plant for them. So I think it's a good proposal for each side. The length of the agreement, it starts in 2017. Actually, we're operating our current agreement till then, and the agreement goes out to 2051. To cancel it, there's a two-year period. Obviously, you can't just turn off somebody's waste flow. You'd have to give them time to either react if we canceled it, or vice versa, to look at our rate structure if we needed that revenue for some reason. We discussed this at our Public Works and Planning meeting, I think, a couple of months ago, and at that time, we recommended to the council.
All right. Any questions of Matt on 110? Bob?
Matt, there are increases built in because of the bonding that we've done, so our rate payers are going to be taking rate increases over the next few years. Is it...does this...are these increases reflected, or would the...would the Holt Summit rate be more stable than our own rate to our own rate payers?
The...it's under a little bit different rate structure, but yes, there are accelerations. If you look at the chart in the packet of the cost to the agreement, it remains stable for a period of years, then takes jumps every so often.
So it's not an equivalent increase of...
We looked at their current flow. You know, they have potential for growth, obviously, but there are limits on the flow they can send. There's also maximum flow limits, meaning that in wet weather, if they have leaky pipes and things, if they go above on a certain flow, they're...basically, the rate would increase. In other words, that would show us they're not taking care of their system properly and sending more, you know, untreated water to us. And so that gives them some incentive to take care of their system as well. So that's all kind of built in there in their agreement.
But there's no...we have no leverage as far as insisting that they repair their pipes or what have you, only this...
Through this maximum daily flow, that's our leverage that we'd like to use.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on, we have first reading of 2013-111.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing an ingress/egress easement and a sanitary sewer, storm drainage, and detention basin easement in Loggie Ridge subdivision.
While we're here, we'll go ahead and have first reading of 2013-112 also.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Loggie Ridge subdivision, section two, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Also while we're here, we'll have first reading of 2013-113, as they're all related.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending section nineteen, four-oh-one, Schedule J, parking prohibited, subparagraph A, streets and highways of the code of the city of Jefferson pertaining to Trenton Court located in Loggie Ridge subdivision, section two.
Janice, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill 111 is the vacation of an ingress/egress easement, sanitary sewer, storm drainage, and detention basin easement in Loggie Ridge, the future Loggie Ridge subdivision, section two. The location is shown on the screen in front of you. It's near the intersection of Veth and Route C. Here's the location of the sanitary sewer or the easements that would be vacated, shown in red. The Loggie Ridge subdivision was earlier proposed and was revised. The original plat of section two had two streets. This one has one longer cul-de-sac, so it necessitated the vacation of the easements. The new access to the future detention basin is shown in the green, by the green line. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Janice? Does that line up where the opening currently is, Mr. Loggie? Or maybe Janice could answer that for you? Thanks for being here, by the way.
The opening?
On Route C. Well, we currently see there as we drive by, is that where this road will be, basically?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Any other questions by council members? Okay, moving on, we'll have first reading of 2013-114.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Holiday House Acres subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Janice?
Thank you. Holiday House subdivision is located near the intersection of East McCarty Street and about four hundred feet east along Robinson Road. This subdivision consists of three tracts. On one tract, there's an existing house. Two new lots would be created by this subdivision, and it's zoned RS2, single-family residential. Planning and Zoning Commission approved this subdivision on November fourteenth and recommended its approval.
Okay. Any questions on 114? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2013-115.
An ordinance amending chapter three, advertising and signs of the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to electronic message centers.
Janice?
Well, occasionally, we do review our codes to make sure that they're pertinent and stay current. Recently, we had a request from...arising from Helius High School to review the city's sign ordinance. Currently, there's a prohibition of electronic signs in certain zoning districts, including residential zoning districts. What they would like to do is erect, as part of new signage, for their campus electronic message centers. And so we discussed this at the last meeting of the Public Works and Planning Committee and have brought forward an amendment to our sign code that would allow electronic message centers in the C1 district, in addition to the already permitted in C2, M1, and M2 districts, and would also allow them, as part of any school, any public or private elementary, middle, or high school campus, regardless of where it would be located.
Okay. Any questions of Janice? Rick?
Is this going through planning and zoning?
It is not. We would inform the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time of their next meeting that this is being proposed. Advertising and signs is its own separate chapter in the city code. It's not part of the zoning code, so that's why it's treated in this fashion.
Ken?
Just a quick question. Janice, it'll apply to any public or private school. Does the school or entity have to own that property? If a private school were leasing space, would they also be able to put up electronic sign?
They would be required to own it, I believe, or have some other kind of a...some long-term control over the site or the campus. I would like to point out, too, there are some other standards that would be in place on the timing and on the lighting, the amount of lighting that it could be emitted, and then a requirement to either turn the display to a static display or turn it off after the hour of 10:00 PM, I believe.
Rick?
Just a follow-up on that. It seems to me that...I don't know what this...this is fairly harmless, but if it were a flashing sign and it had a lot of lights, and it could be...residents in the area might have a concern about their bedrooms and living rooms being illuminated ever so often, and I'm surprised that it doesn't go through Board of Adjustment or P&amp;Z and allow adjacent landowners their opportunity to have a hearing on this.
Your thoughts, Janice?
Well, my thoughts are that if we can develop a standard that puts everyone on equal...an equal playing field, then the expectations of what a sign...the type of design that's allowed is preferable than taking every sign to the Board of Adjustment where a different standard could be applied and a different result. So that's my thinking in applying a standard that's applied uniformly to all of these situations. It takes the uncertainty out of it for the school or the developer, and it also takes the uncertainty out of it for the neighborhood.
So, Janice, this would be not just for the schools, but for anywhere in town?
Well, only the schools would be allowed to have a sign. If the school happens to be in a residential district, only a school could have an electronic message center.
So we wouldn't...with this, we wouldn't necessarily see these on Missouri Boulevard, per se?
Pardon me?
We wouldn't see these on Missouri Boulevard. There would still be a...
Well, currently, an EMC would be...is allowed in the C2, M1, and M2 districts right now. So if there's a school that's in the C2 district, for example, then they're already allowed to have an EMC.
Okay. Any other questions? Rick, go ahead.
Just a last follow-up, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
So if this passes, then they would automatically be allowed to erect an electronic sign within this, anywhere they wanted, on their property, on Swift's or Stadium or all-adjacent streets?
They would be allowed to have one twenty-four-square-foot sign. It'd have to be part of a ground-mounted sign or part of a building-mounted sign. One of those...if there was a street frontage, then one per street frontage.
And that can occur without any Board of Adjustment or any P&amp;Z therefore?
Yes.
It'd be allowed through this?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other property that you can think of that this would apply to, other than Helius?
Well, currently, all of...almost all of the schools have message boards. They have the old-fashioned, changeable message boards, and so the idea is that the newer technology would replace eventually those electronic...or replace the changeable message boards. Some of those don't always look all that attractive, but...so that's the idea behind it, is to put all of the schools on the same standard, so that if they wanted to switch out their changeable message boards, they could.
Any other questions of Janice? Bob?
Janice, I'm trying to remember some of the conversation that we had in Public Works, but I know there were questions raised about the brightness of the light and the flash, you know, the...how often the message could change and all that sort of thing. And the reason for those questions was concerns about it being a problem for neighbors. And as I recall your explanation, I think we were satisfied that it wouldn't be so intrusive as maybe some signs that we've all seen. Could you maybe review that with us, what the...
Sure.
And I think, wasn't there supposed to be an automatic...where it automatically dims after a certain...
Right.
...time of the night?
Right.
And maybe quits changing at a certain time? So...
Right. Currently, there is a standard on how bright...on the brightness, and it's based on the ambient light in the area. So depending on the area of the sign, in this case, there is a chart that shows what the level of the lighting can be. It also has to be turned off after...between the hours of 6:00 AM...between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, it has to be turned off or set to a static display. And the maximum height of a ground sign, which this...which an electronic message center would be part of, is a...there's a maximum height of ten feet. So it can't be a gigantic sign like you would see on Missouri Boulevard. It would be designed more to fit in with a residential or non-commercial area by limiting the height. And it also limits the sign face to thirty-two square feet, twenty-four square feet of which could be their electronic message area.
And what recourse, if any, would the public have? Once a sign was allowed under this ordinance, if it became a nuisance, is there any recourse, or is it grandfathered in at that point?
Well, anyone can file a complaint with our department, or if they really want to have a hearing before a body, they could file any kind of a request like that with the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment would review it to see if the department issued the sign permit in accordance with the ordinance, so they could have their hearing in that fashion.
Okay, thank you. Rick Prather?
You said schools. Is this a broad definition of schools, or is it pretty specific as to not just anybody opens a preschool can have this?
No, it's defined as a public or private elementary, middle, or high school.
Come one more time. What was that?
A public or private elementary, middle, or high school.
Just an idea. What about Lincoln? Or Columbia College, or William Woods?
Well, Lincoln University is a state institution, and they're...while we would like for our city ordinances to apply to them, they can put up their own signage if they so choose.
What about a private school like William Woods? That would be considered private, though, right?
Pardon me?
William Woods would be considered a private school, and if they wanted one of these, they could.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on 2013-115 dealing with signage, electronic signage? Okay, we'll see more of that in a couple of weeks. First reading of 2013-116, please.
An ordinance amending section nineteen, four-oh-one, motor vehicles and traffic, Schedule V, disabled parking spaces of the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by the addition of a disabled parking space on a portion of Ash Street addressed as 325 Ash Street.
Matt?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would add a disabled parking space on Ash Street. It's the block that was just completed through the city's CDBG project near Prison Brews, that area, that block of curb and gutter and sidewalk project. The...this had been a frequent request to the Transportation and Traffic Commission in the past, and typically, how that's handled is through the commission. If someone comes forward and they would like a disabled space near their home, if they're willing to fund the cost of the ramp and so forth to get it there and make it compliant, then the commission would typically recommend it to the council for approval. This particular person never had followed through in the past on that request. However, during the process of this project, I think they did approach our CDBG coordinator, and they were eligible to receive funds through that program to have this constructed. So while they didn't front them themselves, but they were eligible through a program to get those funds. And so it went back to the Transportation and Traffic Commission just recently, and they recommended approval of the space to the committee. Cost to add that is about a thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions for Matt? Bob?
Matt, as part of this project, was the street striped for parking?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head. We don't typically do that, but I can't say. Now, this would be striped, obviously, and this would be striped as a public handicap space. Since there are...there is a business, at least one, on the block, you know, there might be some competition for the space, but there is another space that the business put in when they went in originally as well.
One issue that I've noticed, and I hope this is not out of order, Mr. Mayor, but the reason I ask the question about striping for parking is I've noticed that it seems as though a number of residents along there utilize their trash cans as blocks to prevent parking along the street there. And I was just curious if we'd done anything to define those areas as parking areas?
I don't believe we have, but the...one thing about when you start striping parking spaces on a street, you have to strip them to standard. And sometimes, you know, that limits, you know, may reduce by a space or something on a block if you have small cars happen to be parking there, things like that. So we typically don't like to do that, especially in residential areas. It's not that it can't be done.
Well, I don't think we should make an exception necessarily, but I just was curious. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on 116? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2013-117, please.
An ordinance amending section nineteen, four-oh-one, motor vehicles and traffic, Schedule N, parking meter zones and monthly parking fees of the code of the city of Jefferson pertaining to various locations within the downtown area.
Matt, you're up again, my friend.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clerk indicated, and there's a chart in your packet, but this is kind of a cleanup ordinance of our downtown parking regulations. If you look through here, there's strikeouts of things that are being taken out, and one example might be 300 East High Street. We had a lot still listed in here. It's probably where the jail is located now, so that needed to come out. But we had reviewed this, the number of spaces per block, say, things of that nature, and tried to correct all those that we could find that were out of whack. But then there are also a couple little changes. The major one being that in some of the areas near the state buildings, the parking time limit was one hour, and that's being changed to two hours to have a little more uniformity. People have...we have frequent complaints that they can't get their business done within one hour, so we're requesting that changed to two hours. So there's various cleanups in here, but that is one major change. Try to answer any questions if you...
Any questions? Oh, sorry. Any questions for Matt? Okay, moving on, 2013-118, please. Clerk?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the Personnel Policy Manual Regarding Residency of Employees.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance would revise the residency limits to require all department directors to reside within the city limits. However, there'd be an exception for those promoted from within and any new hire at the discretion of the city council. It would allow the council to weigh the reasons for the residency rule versus the quality of the candidate. The issues come up a number of times over the years, and, I don't know, six months or so ago, the council decided on a fifteen-mile limit. The Public Works Director was left to reside within the city limits. However, the issue's come up again, because as I indicated to council, and I certainly hope and believe the council supports, that we're going to go ahead and try to do some more efficiencies and shrink the size of government, combine some positions, and hire from within on that Public Works Director position. However, it does bring the issue up yet again, because a number of our candidates do reside outside the city limits, and my understanding is they're not particularly willing to relocate without a substantial raise, in which case we lose all of our efficiencies. Councilman had asked me to address two questions about this. One is the reasons for the residency rule, and I think the primary reason is response time to emergencies, and that's what came up with fifteen-mile radius issue. Two other reasons that are often cited are, you know, appearances slash loyalties, and that the resident would help pay their own property tax. And while all those are very reasonable considerations, this amendment would allow the council to consider each of those things as they value against the quality of the candidate that they have. As I put in the bill summary, for example, you can value how far away that person is when it comes to response time, or whether that particular position needs to be quickly responsible or not. I would say...I've been waiting to say this for a while. That loyalty thing is nonsense. Loyalty is within the person. When you all appointed me interim city administrator, I got up at 5:15 one day to come meet the police department, to meet with them, because Roger asked me to at six o'clock at a shift change. We had a brown bag at 7:30. I had the lunch meeting, and then we had a night conference center discussion. I was here forever, and I did it because I respect you all and I like my job, but it's not because of where I hang my hat. I just want to get that out as a shot at the paper, really. But anyway, going back to the actual discussion. Another question that came up is, is this being proposed for one person? The issue continues to come up as these positions are filled, but I would argue that what the council desires, and what Councilman Scrivener's proposal here does, is establishes a policy that would not automatically eliminate candidates based on residency. It just allows the council the ability to pick whatever candidates are best. So it may be...this may technically apply to, what, four of the seven candidates, or five of the seven candidates, probably, for internally. It's an issue that applies, you know, citywide, and obviously, we look for a long-term solution to this issue that keeps coming up.
Any questions on 118? All right, seeing none, we'll move into bills pending. Third reading of 113...excuse me, 2013-103, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending chapter twenty, municipal judge, court, etc., section twenty-eight, court costs of the code of the city of Jefferson to codify a warrant fee.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For years, the municipal judge has issued a charge. Someone fails to appear, they issue a warrant. That costs us time and effort, and so the judge is assessed a warrant fee during a recent audit by the auditor's office. They suggested that we actually codify that rather than be judicial power, so we have added that to the code under 103...under this bill, I'm sorry, that authorizes the judge up to a fifty-dollar charge for warrant fee.
Any questions of Drew on 103? Discussion by the council? Roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen, one oh four, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an addendum to the agreement with Coal County for joint communication services.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Th- this ordinance would just amend the contract with the county to allow us to broadcast from our new hardened facility, the new fire station three.
Any, uh, questions for staff on one oh four? Debate? Roll call, please.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather? Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen, one oh five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds from the general fund.
Mr. Bats, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Uh, this ordinance here just moves fifty thousand dollars, uh, from the, uh, general fund fund balance into a line item to, uh, take care of the ALPLA settlement.
Any questions on, uh, one oh five? Debate? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen, one oh six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with George Butler Associates Incorporated for the West Edgewood Drive Traffic Study Project.
Mr. Matt?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is for engineering contract with George Butler. Uh, the cost of the agreement's just, uh, under forty-eight thousand dollars. Estimated completion time for the traffic studies are March two thousand fourteen. Uh, funded through the half cent sales tax, and it's part of our city-county project, kind of an offshoot of the Frog Hollow project. The, uh, that project was modified and, uh, was agreed at the time that we would study the corridor of, uh, Edgewood from stadium up to highway one seventy-nine. Uh, this will do that and give us a long-range plan for that area.
Any questions on one oh six? Mr. Henry?
Uh, Matt, just, uh, just to make sure, the costs have already been factored in to this? This was already factored in, the costs?
Right, uh, this was the, uh, you mean as far as the construction portion? Uh, yeah, obviously, uh, when they do the, the contract, uh, the, or, excuse me, when they complete the study, they'll, we anticipate they'll have different options for construction, uh, possibly phasing to, to look at our budget available uh, within that city-county project, the, when the, when the Frog Hollow project was revised, that project was lessened in scope, so it's going to cost much less than the original larger project. So there'll be some funds available to do some phases of this.
Any other questions on one oh six? Yes, Carlos?
Uh, was this, um, a bid or RFP or what?
Uh, this is, uh, these are negotiated services on, uh, their state law governing how these, uh, services are obtained. So, uh, we could request, uh, qualifications, uh, for people from traffic studies. So it's a RFQ, all these little different acronyms.
Yeah, RFQ, yeah.
And, uh, and then we negotiate on the service.
Okay.
Any other questions on one oh six? Seeing none, debate? Roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen, one oh seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri State Highway Patrol for a ground lease at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Matt?
Thank you. Uh, as clerk indicated, this would, uh, be the ground lease for the highway patrol hangar at the airport. Uh, the cost of the, uh, lease payment, the first year anyway, is, uh, uh, just over sixty-three hundred dollars. There are, uh, extensions up to four years total. Uh, there is an escalation to make the, uh, overall cost of the agreement over the term about a three percent increase per year.
Any questions of Matt on, um, one oh seven? Debate? Roll call, please.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes. Nothing on the informal calendar tonight. We'll move into resolutions. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion on resolution twenty thirteen dash thirty-seven.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, clerk, please.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
Jason Turner.
Mr. Mayor, this, uh, thank you. Following the, uh, city's new grant policies that, uh, you guys established, um, this grant would allow the fire department to apply for the new FEMA firefighter's assistance grant. The grant would be used, uh, to purchase specialized rescue equipment, provide training for that, uh, new equipment. Uh, this is the, this is only the application process.
Okay. Any, uh, questions on, uh, resolution thirty-seven?
Sean? Um, Mr. Turner, is this a, a one-time, one-year grant or is the, the money's over several years or?
This would be a one-time grant. Uh, our last, uh, grant that was awarded to the fire department was in two thousand and four. Of course, the competition for the grants have gotten a lot harder. That's why we haven't, uh, gotten them over the years. But, uh, we've applied for these a- annually for the last twelve years.
Thank you.
Bob?
Um, always for additional training, but I do have a question. Uh, will this, uh, additional training and equipment require additional ongoing costs from the fire department? Either adding additional training or, I mean, uh, additional equipment or ongoing training of this nature? Is, is this putting us in a position where we're developing expertise that we then have to continue to, um, maintain?
We currently have the, uh, the expertise within our organization. This would be bringing it up to more modern technology. Uh, I wouldn't expect it to be any cost difference than where, where we are today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on thirty-seven? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Next we'll have, um, um, we'll entertain a motion and a second on resolution twenty thirteen thirty-eight. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, please.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to apply for a Smart Growth America Grant.
Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution would authorize the application for a technical assistance grant through the, uh, office of, um, EPA's Office of Sustainable Communities. Um, the purpose is to, uh, apply for a land use code audit. Would basically provide an assessment of our development regulations, including local zoning and subdivision codes. Um, help us to evaluate those issues so that we can have a, a more sustainable development pattern. And would also provide some tips on implementation, uh, of a, of a new code. Uh, this doesn't actually involve any, um, grant funds coming to the city, and so we don't have to actually match any, any cash with this grant. It is a technical assistance grant similar to that, uh, we received for the, um, Greening Americas Capitals program a few years ago. So EPA would essentially hire a consultant to come in, work with our community for two days, uh, provide some recommendations, and then we would evaluate those recommendations and enact the, uh, um, recommendations that, that the council, uh, felt were appropriate.
Okay. Any questions of Janice on, uh, thirty-eight? Seeing none, debate? Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
Um, I do have a question, Janice. I believe, uh, question was asked in, uh, our, um, Public Works and Planning Meeting, um, whether or not the city would be under any obligation to enact any of the recommendations that might be made by the EPA. And I believe your answer was that there would be no obligation.
We're under an obligation to consider the recommendations, but ultimately it's the council's decision on what ordinances and policies are enacted.
Okay, then I, I would propose a, a, an amendment to this resolution on the one, two, three, fourth, whereas it says the grant does not require a cash, cash match. And, then I would add behind that and does not obligate the city to enact any of the recommendations of, of the EPA.
Drew?
I think it's a good motion. I think Phyllis is writing it down.
Okay.
Um, I made that in the form of a motion. Second.
Okay, uh, is a amendment, I guess, to the resolution. Is that correct?
Yeah, it'd be a mo- that was a motion to amend the resolution to do that.
So we're now talking about a, uh, amendment, as Bob stated. Uh, discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, roll call on the amendment. Whoop.
Read, read it back.
I don't have the actual resolution.
Okay, let me, let me try to restate it a little slower.
I can read the text, but I don't have the resolution where to put it.
Oh.
You can show me that.
One, two, three, four, five, it's, uh, on the fifth, whereas it would be the grant does not require a cash match and?
And does not obligate the city to enact any of the recommendations of the EPA.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, roll. I'm sorry, folks, I'm getting voice vote. I just saved someone a couple bucks. Um, all in favor, please say aye of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll now be discussing twenty thirteen thirty-eight as amended. More discussion on twenty thirteen, uh, thirty-eight. Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Next we'll entertain a motion on resolution twenty thirteen dash thirty-nine.
Second.
Fellas, please.
A resolution authorizing a renewal of the proposal with MOPRM for liability insurance.
Gail?
Thank you. As the resolution states, this renews our policy for liability and auto insurance, um, for a policy year starting January one. Um, the policy would be with the Missouri Public Entity Risk Management Fund, and this would be the second year with them.
Okay. Any questions of, uh, staff on, uh, twenty thirteen thirty-nine? Rick?
How, how's this fit into our budget? Does it fall in?
It does. It does. Fit in the budget.
Sean?
Mr. Hope, were you able to look up the other bids from the, our pre-meeting? I, I thought you indicated there were three quotes.
I think there were two other proposals, um, that were turned in.
Okay, and they were higher? Both of those were higher than this, this particular quote?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on twenty thirteen thirty-nine? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we have presentations from the gallery on other topics. Uh, do we have anyone else besides Ashley? Ashley's the only one tonight. Um, we have with us Ashley Varner, who's here to talk to us about poverty in Coal County.
Hi, hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time, city staff, councilmen, councilwoman, mayor. Uh, my name is Ashley Varner. I work with Central Missouri Community Action here in Coal County. I am the community organizer. And our mission at Central Missouri Community Action is to empower individuals and families to achieve self-reliance. And our vision for our community, specifically Jefferson City, is to be a thriving, vibrant, safe place to live, embracing all individuals and providing opportunities for growth. Um, I know I only have three minutes, so I want to make this good, and I know I'm last on your agenda, and I know it's been a long meeting. Stick with me. I've got some really good information for you. Um, save the best for last, right? CMCA wants our families to live in decency and in dignity, okay? That should not be insurmountable, but in reality, twelve point three percent of the people living in Coal County, it is a challenge. Twelve point three percent is our current poverty rate. I apologize. What I'm talking about doesn't necessarily match the slides, so I believe Phyllis has the PowerPoint, and, um, we can get handouts to folks if they want the information. I've met with many of you. Some of you are a little bit harder to pin down than others, uh, and, and trying to get your feedback in regards to what you see in our community as local causes and conditions of poverty. And, uh, I really feel, the reason why I'm here tonight, I feel it's, it's, it's vital. I feel it's imperative to share some of this information with you. You are our leaders, you are elected leaders, and you make decisions that affect many of those in the community. Um, CMCA served over fourteen hundred people in fiscal year thirteen, which ended at the end of September, okay? Seven hundred and ninety of those families are in Coal County. That does not include our Head Start families, and that does not include our, what's called MWA, Missouri Work Assistance, which is an employment and training program for TANF or welfare recipients, okay? Um, of those fourteen hundred families, sixty-two point three percent, over half of those families were working. What does that mean? That means what we refer to as the working poor, okay? They're working most likely low-wage jobs. They're still within the federal poverty level. Federal poverty level, a hundred percent, we serve, CMCA serves up to a hundred and twenty-five percent. The federal poverty level, a hundred percent, is about, for a family of four, so if it was myself, my spouse, my two children, that would be twenty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars a year to live on, or nineteen hundred dollars a month roughly, as you see. Um, average household size in Coal County is about two point three. And about three hundred and fifty people of those families lived in Jefferson City, city, inside the city limits. I know that Sean requested that, and I know that Rick had requested some of that information. Again, these figures don't reflect our Head Start families or our TANF recipients that are working with our employment and training program. Um, in Coal County, a living wage is sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. What is a living wage? A living wage is enough money to support you to buy you food, clothing, shelter, and some medical. Sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. I can stand up here with a bachelor's degree and say that working for community action, yes, it's my choice. That I don't make a living wage if it were me, myself, and I. I have a spouse that's employed, and he has a master's degree. He's in counseling. He also doesn't make his own, on his own, single, a living wage. Again, a choice he made. I, I want to speak to the median income here in Jefferson City. Median income is obviously the average or the middle amount. It's twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. There's quite a disparity there. You may ask yourself why. Uh, and we have the capital here. We have a number of congressmen, et cetera. Makes, makes sense when you think about it that way. The per capita income, so the income when you take everybody that's working, so everybody that's working minimum wage jobs to those working in Congress or high-level paying jobs, per capita, it averages about twelve dollars and eighty cents. That's not a living wage, okay? That's the point I'm trying to make here. Um, minimum wage, we all know, is seven, we'll go January first, it'll go to seven fifty. That certainly is not a living wage. Another piece of information I want to bring to your attention is that in fiscal year thirteen, CMCA invested almost two point eight million dollars in Coal County. And what that means is those are programs such as utility assistance, section eight housing, um, employment and training programs such as work assistance, uh, work experience, and subsidized employment opportunities. To me, this information just says that our families need support from our community. This, for me to come here this evening is not necessarily, this is not a call to action. This is not some sort of ultimatum. This is none of the above. This is really information sharing because with this information as leaders, I feel that it's important to have, to help you make decisions. So what, right? What can we do about this, sis? Right? We can support those issues that surround our low-income families. Um, I do support the transit system here in Jefferson City. I'm, I'm a big supporter, and, um, not only to maintain, but to expand. You'll see my face with Citizens for Jefftran, um, and for, forming that, uh, Transit Commission. Um, making affordable housing opportunities available are another piece of the pie. We have very segregated, low-income areas in our community. Um, and we have some opportunities to revitalize some, some older homes, okay? Um, I spoke with our, the president of our chamber yesterday and, and kind of talked to him about some more economic development opportunities. And with that being said... And with that being said, he rose to my attention that in the last 10 years, we've lost here in Jefferson City 2,500 jobs in the state alone, state jobs. And we aren't really doing a whole lot to replace those jobs or those skilled jobs that are now gone. We are bringing in opportunities such as Chick-fil-A. We are bringing in Sam's Club, which is going to rep about, I think it's about 200, 250 jobs. That is absolutely wonderful, but please keep in mind that these jobs are low-paying wage jobs. These jobs are not going to make your single mother with children, the elderly, the disabled, those without a GED, those that have other barriers, self-sufficient. In conclusion, the solution that I'm bringing to the table is not only information, but it's also simply putting your arms around the community and supporting, supporting community action and supporting our low-income families to help them become self-sufficient. Thank you for your time.
Ashley, thank you for coming tonight. I know I've met with you one-on-one, and several of us have. I'm very passionate about what you do. I definitely appreciate your time tonight. Next, we have number 18, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. Seeing none? Any new business to bring before council this evening? I do have, I don't know if this is new business, or it might be number 18, but I guess since you're the mayor, sometimes you can make up the rules as you go. Is that right, Drew? All right, what a great attorney. I want to give our condolences as a city to Leonard Steiman and his family. As we all know, Leonard has ran for several offices within our city. He attends several of our meetings. Leonard lost his mother, was it over the weekend? I can't remember the exact date. But we do want to, I just want to pass that along as the mayor from the council. Reminder, next week, I've asked Drew that, we'll obviously have our work session next Monday at 6 o'clock. We'll have it here in the council chambers, so JCTV can either be here and air it live, or we can record it so people can watch on TV. Any other unfinished business? Ms. Carol.
I just had three things. Earlier, when, I remember Councilman Scrivener mentioned about the trash cans being in the street, and so what I wondered is if that could be a code issue, because the trash cans are only permitted to be in the street certain hour, or 24 hours, let's say. I mean, the ordinance states the number of hours, so perhaps code enforcement could, and I know it's hard to enforce, but if it's a problem, maybe we can approach it from that angle. The second thing, tomorrow morning, we have administration at 8:00 a.m., and I have something else downtown at 8:00 a.m. very briefly, so I might be about 8:03 to get here. So if the vice chair or someone else could, at admin, could call the meeting to order for me, that would be great.
Who's vice chair? Mr. Henry, can you handle that?
Oh, thank you, if you wouldn't mind, just in case I'm not there. And the last thing this Friday night is Living Windows downtown from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then Saturday is the JC's Christmas Parade at 4:30. And I do want to thank our police department, because I know they do a lot of time and effort in closing the streets and directing traffic for those events. And also Saturday with the Christmas Parade, because there's a lot of coordination between businesses and pedestrians and people and parking, so they kind of go the extra mile for those events, so thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And it also reminds me, Mr. Lockwood forgot to remind me, but it's been kind of a busy week with three or four things a night, but we have our, at Rotary Park, we're lighting the city Christmas tree at, I believe, 6:30. I think event starts at 5:30. Lighting's roughly between 6:00 and 6:30, when I can get Darla and a couple of girls ready to be there. But invite the council and everyone else watching to be there. It's always a good event, and Phil Stiles and Parks, they, everyone involved with Parks always does an excellent job with that. It's Thursday night, this Thursday night. Mr. Hilpert.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other thing. I guess it may be an update, but the JCTV contract, about, I don't know, a week or, at the latest, two weeks after the council passed their decision on the financing on JCTV, I sent a revised contract, and I haven't got it back yet. The actual contract will expire December 8th. So I mean, I'm not inclined to ask, it's actually our channel they're broadcasting on, so I mean, unless the council tells me different, I'm going to still let them broadcast, or school will be paying for it anymore. I guess at some point, I have to tell them, either contract or quit broadcasting on our network, but, you know, unless the council wants to give me some other direction, I'm going to be pretty lenient on that and let them keep broadcasting.
Why don't you send a friendly reminder to them that it's due, so to speak?
I will do that.
If it makes sense. Okay, anything else, guys? If not, I will call on Mr. Bray for 21. It is Tuesday. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Drive carefully.